So we're going to call the school committee meeting to order. We are being recorded by Wakeham. Before we get to the tradition of people saying something, well, I'm going to start by saying something about the district. First, I would like to welcome Erin Muller and Christina Mordicco, who were elected to be the new members of the school committee. We are thrilled to have you here. And as you said, Christina, it's not spectators' court, so I hope you enjoy it. And I also want to introduce David Fleishman, who was here during his interview, so everyone met him. But he is here to participate briefly in one of the items that's on the agenda tonight. And he will not be beginning in the district full-time until July 1st. But he has agreed on an hourly basis to come and get oriented and get a new transition before Perry leads and help us out with a few things. So that's what he's doing this evening. All right, welcome to you two, David. We're thrilled to have you with us.
Really nice to meet you.
Okay, so does anyone else on the committee want to say something or tell a story about something that's happened in the schools or have anything to say at the beginning of the meeting?
I have something cool, I guess. So the eighth graders are in DC. I don't have an eighth grader, but a couple, actually, two parents now have reported that they have been so excited by the updates they're getting from their kids, who are having a fabulous time because their updates are not pictures of their friends, they're pictures of like monuments and fun things like that. So it was just really nice to hear that the kids are truly learning and enjoying themselves.
That's great.
DC seems to be going well.
That's good. That was a fun trip, very fun trip.
And I have something to add.
Sure, go ahead.
Jessica, I do have an eighth grader, and I can report and attest that she is sending pictures of monuments and places that they're visiting. So it seems to be going swimmingly. The middle school art department is actually displaying middle school artwork at the Raytheon Room in the library. So I thought that was wonderful. I visited it the other day. It was just nice to see our students' artwork proudly displayed. And they invite the whole community to come visit it, check out the Raytheon Room, and be sure to check the calendar of events, because sometimes they host, you know, meetings and things in there. But it's really lovely to see artwork displayed.
Good. Anyone else? I don't know. Okay. Well, thank you. All right, so next on the agenda is public comment. I don't know if anyone who is here has public comment. Maybe a show of hands, so I can see who is going to make a public comment.
Yeah.
Okay, sure. I think our policy says two minutes, three minutes?
Just a question before I do.
But I am-
Don't punch my clock yet.
No.
I'm anticipating the school committee is going to be considering policy around student assessment. Is that accurate?
That is not on the agenda for this evening. It will, it might be on future-
Just help me check my hand. Yes.
It's not. No, not tonight.
Not the agenda tonight. Okay, so all right, if my remarks are directed there and if it's not appropriate, I'll let them wait.
You're welcome to make remarks if you want to, but I believe that will be on a future agenda. And I cannot say when, because I am not going to be the chair after tonight. So whoever is the next chair is going to decide when to put that on the agenda.
Okay.
So, but it'll be published. It's published on the agenda.
Yeah. Shall we proceed? Okay. I don't want to be on a call, so just wanted to check.
We leave three minutes is the school committee-
Okay, so-
Yeah, that's fine.
Welcome to two members of the school committee. You may not know who I am. My name is John Pierce, and I'm speaking tonight as the facilitator for the task force. And I want to make a couple of comments about it, only because I see an awful lot written in the paper, and it really drives some concern on my part, because I don't think, I don't think people really understand what's going on. And if you'll forgive my saying it, it sounds like an awful lot of ignorance on the part of people. So Dr. Easy came to Wayland, and the first thing he was presented was a conflict between the high school and parents regarding the return of test for kids. My understanding is that went on for about 10 years. There was never a meeting to sit down and talk it out. It just went on. So he was besieged by people, wanting him to address it. He thought about what to do, and his decision was to create a task force, a representative task force, bring them together, represented students, teachers, parents, and others to talk about it. Again, I want to say, it was never talked about prior, but it was an ongoing piece of angst that created some great division within the school community. So the task force was put together. Ms. Crowell was the chair of that committee, of that task force, and I was there to facilitate. And I just want to share some things that will clarify for everyone exactly what took place. There were two objectives for the task force. Number one, bring a group of people from the community together, all of the stakeholders in the question about student assessment. Have, listen to each other, and see if we could find a way to reach a strong consensus about what should be done. That was, that was the hope. The meeting, early meetings were contentious, and we had to break some bad habits about being disrespectful to one another. I do think the first objective was very important, because it was clear to me that when there's something stirring for nearly 10 years and it's not talked about, it's time to talk about how we talk about it. So that's what we did. Now I'll tell you that we had two camps. The high school camp was that under no circumstances should students or parents have any say whatsoever in decisions that are made about education. Nothing, zero. And they wanted us to know immediately that they were opposed to this very meeting, because it was empowering people who had no right to be there. The attitude was, these decisions about school should be, sorry.
Can I just stop you for a second? You're at your three minutes and 78 seconds.
My three minutes is up?
Yep. I just want to know, is there anyone other, I assume Jeff, you'd like to make a public comment. Is there anyone else that is going to want time to make a public comment? Okay.
I won't go on much longer.
I'm going to let you have another minute, okay?
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. So you can understand trying to pull those two groups together and do something. So we did a great deal of work, and we listened. We honestly listened to each other, but we disagreed. Parents and students felt that they should get their exams, their tests, their quizzes and everything back, so they could take them home and use them as a guide to prescribe what they had to relearn or remediate. And they felt very strongly about it. Now, when, when this policy about not giving back the exams took place, the promise was there would be other provisions to be sure that students who needed help would get it. And what the report tells you, if you read it, is that never materialized. It was called a work in progress, but not materialized. So at loggerheads, we turned to the research for better teaching to find out, what does evidence-based research say about best practice?
I'm sorry.
I'm almost there. What does it say about best practices? And overwhelmingly, in a three-hour presentation, we all learned that student assessment needs to be part of learning, and that the more information students have about what they need to correct, the better off they were going to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment.
You're giving me my time. Thank you.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you. Jeff Sklar, Brooks and Rose. I'm speaking on the same topic.
Jesus gracious.
And I want to say-
Your tongue is bleeding.
Ooh, you okay? You okay? All right. I want to speak about the math of help. If tests are not returned, and students need to go, and every student needs some help, say they missed some questions, and each teacher has to spend 10 minutes with each student whenever there's a test, 10 minutes times 100 students works out to about 17 hours of teacher time to give each student 10 minutes. The assumption to be, in order to make that work, is that maybe 80, 90% of the students would not go to ask for help. The assessments we learned, we talked in, when the research for better teaching came, they talked about the purpose of testing could be twofold. One, one is assessment of learning through determining grades, and the other one is assessments for learning, so that students can learn from their errors. And if the goal is, we only care about grades and learning isn't important, we should not return tests. If we believe learning is the objective, then we need to return so students get that feedback, so students can learn. The purpose, you know, we don't want our students to be in competition. We want them to be in cooperation, collaboration, working together to learn. You want students to become self-learners. You don't want learning to be dependent on just the teacher only. Students need to take responsibility, learn from their mistakes, seek help, use their resources. They will not always have a teacher teaching them. When they leave in life, they're making things we have to learn on our own. And that's part of self-learning. When we make mistakes, we find out what they are, we do work, we try to resolve them. That's part of self-learning. Couple of points I just want to make on that is that we, we're all going to learn, we need to learn from tests. We learned, the students can learn how to better prepare for tests, how to take tests. There's so much learning that can occur after a test. Saying you have a category, I had a problem with rational functions, doesn't tell you exactly what error you made, what exactly it is you, concept you're missing. You have a general idea, but that's, that's not enough. You need to know specifics, so you can fix the exact errors. Couple little technical things to note. Dean Viallo of DESI, who's the head of compliance, said that if, if a student asks for this and has a 504 and IEP, and they're not provided, Wayland will be in violation. So I believe if, when putting the policy, should extend to midterms and finals, because frankly, they're the most important exams to come back. The finals, the end of the year, students can learn over the summer. Midterms, you learn for the second half of the year. So I think those should be incorporated also. Val McGregor, last week, because the speaker said that MCAS questions are not returned, I spoke with Val McGregor, DESI, and Matt Viallo. He told me all, 100% of all high school MCAS questions are released and returned this morning. Make sure we knew that.
Jeff?
Yes?
You're at three minutes. I'm going to give you one more. Okay, just to-
Fair enough. Great, thank you. So I think that the idea is learning, assessment should be for learning. We should learn from our mistakes. We should gather afterwards, find out what they are, get better. Error analysis, improving is part of learning. And I think I'll leave it there. I want to thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comments?
One last comment.
Oops.
Sorry. When research for better teaching came, that was the whole point, is that students need them, I guess John said it, need them for the learning, need them for the feedback. He said, there were 54 studies cited that have studied this topic, and all 54 came back with the same conclusion, that the test should be returned, students need the feedback, they learn from the feedback. They told us there was not a single study saying otherwise, that students performed better without, it was one quote, read one quote. "The fundamental error comes from the institutional perspective that students are primarily an object that is taught. So an empowered teacher is more important success than an empowered learner. And as this institutional attitude is probably more damaging for student achievement than any particular policy on whether or not students have access to assessments." Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments? Okay, closing public comment. We are moving on to the acting superintendent's update, Mr. Green, or Dr. Brown.
Thank you very much. So I wanted to provide you with some updates about different leadership positions and where we stand with the hiring process for those, before I hand it over to David Fleishman to talk about the interim assistant superintendent position. So one of the open positions we have or had is the assistant director of student services position. I'm very happy to say that we have filled that position. We filled that position earlier this week. So Ronnie Kessler is the, is going to be the assistant director of student services next year. I sent a note out to staff, I think yesterday, and I'm planning to send a note out to parents within the next 24 hours, parents who have students who are placed out of district, and that's who this role primarily works with, although not exclusively. So the assistant director of student services, I would say roughly 70% of that person's job is to work with students and families who are placed out of the district. And so that means chairing IEP meetings, working with the families, coordinating that whole process. But about 30% of the job is supporting the director of student services position in a wide range of ways. So Ronnie Kessler, the person who we hired for the position, is currently the out-of-district coordinator in Framingham Public Schools, and she's been in that position since 2019. Prior to that, she was the special ed team coordinator at the elementary level for, I think it was either two or three elementary schools, did that for six years. She was a special education teacher for 10 years. We had a hiring committee that interviewed multiple candidates, and she was the unanimous choice of the hiring committee. I reached out to her references, and that included the sped director in Framingham. They all said wonderful things about her, so we're very excited to be welcoming her to Fram, to, from Framingham to win for next year.
Perry, can I just ask for everybody else? This is not an interim position. This is a-
Correct.
Permanent position.
This is a permanent-
One of the only ones.
Full-time position.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Feel free to jump in at any point. I wanted to let you know also that we conducted interviews earlier this week for the interim director of student services position. So I'm coordinating with David about next steps, and the target date to bring a name to the committee would be May 24th. And this brings me to an opportunity to make some sad congratulations. So Dr. Barbara Catalda, who is with us here tonight, was just recently, I think within the last 24, 36 hours, appointed to be the interim director of student services, sorry, interim executive director of student services, I believe, for Framingham Public Schools. So Dr. Catalda has been working as the interim sped director here in Wayland, has done a tremendous amount of work here in a variety of different ways. I'm incredibly appreciative of all the work that she's done. So I wish her well. And our process continues for figuring out who her replacement is going to be for next year. So the target date is the next school committee meeting, May 24th. And I believe either David or me, on David's behalf, will be bringing a name to you all at that time. The Happy Hollow Principal Search, I am leading the second round of that search. So we had a first round and ended up not being able to hire someone from that first round. So I reconstituted the search team. So the members of that first search team were all going to, are all coming back. We're going to work together again. We're going to be reviewing resumes next week. We posted the position several weeks ago, conducting first-round interviews the week of May 22nd, and then looking to do finalist visits in early June. So looking to have a final decision about that before the end of the school year. David will be actively involved once we get to the finalist stage in that process as well. And then I want to hand it over to David to talk about the interim assistant superintendent position. But before he does that, if he doesn't mind, I'd like to talk a little bit about the process that happened before he stepped in. So we had a search committee. It was a very large, inclusive committee that was led by Allison Misoguchi, the principal at the high school. When I was hired as the assistant superintendent, Allison led that search process as well, so she has experience doing this. The committee developed a list of core competencies and skills that they were looking for in an interim assistant superintendent for next year. The committee identified three finalists. Those finalists were then moved forward. One of those finalists, Jody Fortuna, ended up dropping out. She got a job offer somewhere else in the process. We had finalist interviews for the two candidates, Brian Ackerman and Betsy Gavran. Those finalist interviews included a day in Wayland. There were opportunities for meetings with administrators, with staff, with families. They had the opportunity to meet the finalists and then provide feedback. They also had the opportunity to go and do, it's like visits at Locur Elementary, the Spanish immersion program at Locur is a, is a program that the assistant superintendent works very closely with. And then also visit the high school. So all those people who had opportunity to meet the finalists, provided feedback through an anonymous Google forum that I then shared with David. And so I now want to hand things off to David to talk about the next step in the process and, and him, I believe, bringing forward a name. Before he does that, though, I want to just talk a little bit about David. So David and I have been in close communication for the last two or three weeks since he was named as the acting superintendent. I have very much enjoyed working with him so far. I've found him to be a very calm, steady, and experienced presence, which has been very helpful for me. I have felt quite guilty about the fact that I am leaving Wayland at the end of this year. Knowing that David is going to be here, leaving the district next year makes me feel a little bit less guilty. So I am very happy to welcome him to Wayland. And I will turn it over to you now.
Thanks, Perry. And I look forward to, you know, I'm not going to bother you once you leave, because you've got a new job, but it'll be hard not to, because you've been so, it'll be helpful to me. And I know so many other people on the leadership team, so thank you for your good work over the last several years, in particular, over the last several months. So a little bit about my role in this process, a little bit about my background. So I was thinking this morning, I've hired 13 assistant superintendents in my career. So I have a lot of experience hiring assistant superintendents in two school districts. I also think when we hire interim superintendents, I have the same high standard as I would for a permanent superintendent. I think that's really important to note. And in terms of my involvement, so last week, I did two steps in the process. Number one, I listened to the interviews with the administrative council members of both finalists, both of whom were excellent. And I then looked at the feedback from those interviews. And then I interviewed both candidates as, as well, extensively asking questions about teaching and learning, human resources, but more importantly, some of the challenges that Wayland will face in the coming year, given what's transpired, you know, in recent days. And so, in recent months, I should say. And so that was kind of my lens. And certainly, while interviews are really, really important, so is certainly the record of work. And they're both important. And obviously, you know, I consider that as well. So tonight, I'm really happy at my first meeting, a school committee meeting in Wayland, to recommend Betsy Gavran to be the interim assistant superintendent. Betsy, as all of you know, has been in Wayland a long time, 13 years as middle school principal. And what impresses me about Betsy is that her focus on relationships with multiple stakeholders over a long period of time. She's thoughtful. She leads by listening. When I was here the last time, I talked about listening to learn, and Betsy's somebody who does listen to learn. Next year will be also a time for perspective-taking, for healing. Betsy's given that a lot of thought. And Betsy is somebody who, you know, when I think about the assistant superintendents I've hired, Betsy is at that standard. She meets that standard, and she knows the district at a time, which I think is particularly important. Perry was just talking about, obviously, the student services role will be interim, I'll be acting. It'll be really helpful to have somebody who knows the district, but also somebody who's willing to learn about aspects of the district that she doesn't know about. You know, my, my former colleague, Paul Stein, talks about Betsy as a systems thinker, and that's something that is really needed in this position to be successful, and she's also a systems thinker. Betsy's somebody also who has trust and confidence of the staff. And that is so important right now, to have somebody in a leadership position who people trust, who people will talk to, somebody who's honest and, and really candid, and somebody who also loves being with the kids. I mean, Betsy did a 15-hour day, I think on Monday, with eighth graders. That takes a lot of work to lead an eighth-grade trip. So she obviously loves kids. Primarily, this role is supporting adults, which is really needed with keeping a focus on kids. And lastly, Betsy's somebody who cares deeply about racial equity, and certainly, that's something we talked about. She's really comfortable talking about race and social justice issues, where we want Wayland to be a leader. And so for all those reasons, I'm very happy to recommend Betsy as the interim assistant superintendent for next year. And I also want to thank the interview committee for putting forward two really strong finalists.
All right. So I think we have to vote.
But before we do, can I say something?
Yep, just to mention, yep. I was going to ask, just going to ask, does anyone have any comments or discussion or anything that they want to say? Jess, go ahead.
So I really like Betsy. She's someone I truly admire, think very highly of. My concern is that, how the process happened with the hiring committee. I know of three members specifically who complained about biases during the process, and I want to make sure that that was properly vetted and investigated, and that those people's concerns were taken into consideration, so that all of our hiring is done appropriately in order to protect the district.
So I just want, since you chose to make that comment, I'm just going to, Perry, jump in here and tell me if I'm wrong in saying this, because I could be. But my memory from the committees I have been on is that the process, the hiring process is confidential purposefully. And so comments from the people who are involved in the hiring process outside of the bubble of confidentiality is not really appropriate, and I just want the public to know that, given Jess's remark.
But I know in other instances, like meetings that are supposed to be confidential, we've investigated. So I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing. That's all.
But the school committee's not a place to break up. It's the point that I'm making.
So I can-
I brought it up previously, privately.
So I agree with what you said, Ellen. I want to be very, very cautious in speaking about personnel-related stuff, or speaking about hiring practices confidentiality, something that we do want to really protect, particularly in first-round committees. We have, like, sort of, the golden rule is, it's what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas, that when you're in a committee, you want to be able to have open and honest deliberations and conversations, and know that that's going to remain there. At the same time, I'm going to speak, Jess, in very general terms, because I don't want to speak in specific terms. If there are concerns that are brought to me, I take concern seriously. And if there were ever a situation where I felt that there was a need to investigate, then I certainly would do that. And I would, I would, I would use any results or anything that I found to make sure that I was figuring out ways to improve processes going forward. So I'll speak in very general terms. And there certainly have been situations in a variety of different circumstances where we need to conduct some sort of investigation into a situation and figure out what happened and then respond appropriately. So I'm trying to speak in very general terms, but I appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I certainly appreciate all the feedback and thought that you put into bringing this candidate forward, David, and Perry, for everything you did before that. I have to think that we put faith in both of you, and that everything that was done is done above board. And if not, then the appropriate steps will be taken. I feel like we have to put faith in our acting superintendent and trust in his decisions. And that's all I'm going to say on that.
So I'm going to just, I'm not familiar with the questions, the details of the questions that have been raised throughout the process. I've not followed that bouncing well, but I do agree with one thing that David said, which I think is really important to us right now, and that is that having someone in the central office who is very familiar with the district at this time is, I think, a real benefit to us, considering how much turnover we have in the central office going on as David comes on board. So I just want to highlight that point, because I do think it's a really important point for the district as a whole.
Yeah, I'd also like to tag onto that as well. I, I think that Betsy does have those strong relationships that you mentioned, David, and definitely the, the knowledge and the history with Wayland is going to be very important in this time. So I appreciate that, you know, you considered those important things to bring Betsy forward. So thank you.
Great. So we need a motion. We need a vote. You need a motion?
I will make a motion to-
Approve, I think.
Is it just approve?
Prove or a point.
It's just to approve. Approve the acting superintendent's recommendation for the interim assistant superintendent role. Ready?
I'll second. Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
We're done.
And we will have, my first communication of the Wayland community will be tomorrow morning with this information. So I look forward to sharing Betsy's appointment.
Great. Thank you very much, David. And I know you are a busy man and have other concerns, so you are welcome to excuse yourself from the school committee on this point.
Thank you. I will be back for future school committee meetings and look forward to working with all of you, and welcome to our two new members. Look forward to working with both of you and everybody else. So thanks so much.
Thanks a lot.
Tonight.
Thanks, David.
Bye-bye.
Okay.[1783.66]
And that is the end of my acting superintendent's update, I believe.
Okay. So now we are on, now we are on financial matters, discussion and possible vote to increase school lunch prices for adults beginning for the 2023 to 2024 school year. Who is speaking to this talk?
Yes, I am.
Go, Tom, go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair. Just for a little background, we've had two smaller type of audits from the DESI with food service in the last few months. One was a procurement review, and the second was just an administrative review. This was more of a technical issue than, based on the reimbursement rate from the USDA, we're a few cents shy on the adult meal price. Right now, we should be charging $4.78, we're charging $4.50. So, I discussed this with the auditor, and they were in agreement that we could just up the price for the next school year, and we'd be back in compliance. So we're suggesting to the committee, we raise that price to $5 per meal for an adult, be a staff member, starting in September. So that's really what I'm bringing forward.
And this is basically a requirement?
We have to go to $4.78, but that's this year. So we'll be right back to you as soon as the rates are established for fiscal '24. So we just thought we'd take it one shot and get it done for September.
All right. Does anyone have any discussion about the increase in the lunch price for staff? No? Okay. I need a motion. I will move, how about that? I will move that we approve the increase in school lunch prices for adults beginning for the 2023 to 2024 school year from $4.50 to $4.78. As recommended, I'm sorry, $5, as recommended by... Tom.
Thank you.
I need a second.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Can I just make one comment while we're here? I would really like to recognize our food service director, Cheryl Judd. I sat through both of those audits with her, and I've never seen anything like this. We had a few little technical, very technical, you know, dotted an "i" here, across a "t" there, but both of them went phenomenally well. I was pleasantly surprised at the outcome of both of those visits.
Thanks for saying that, Tom, because she is wonderful. Every interaction I've had with her has been absolutely wonderful.
I had lunch at the high school yesterday, and it was worth $5, no question. Sweet potato fries.
Sweet potato fries. Delicious. Okay. Review of the FY '23 budget to actual.
The budget to actual document is in your folder. Things are very, very tight, as we've been discussing right along. And really, that's all I really have to say, unless you have specific questions on specific accounts.
There's still a freeze in place, right, Tom?
Yes. We're actually consolidating all the remaining amounts now, because we'll recover the end of the year. So the low light or the highlight, I think, on your viewpoint was, you know, we've overshot legal by about between $100,000 and $200,000. And out-of-district tuition, we all know, has been a horrifying result this year. So we're at least a million over, just in that one bucket.
All right. And is there any other sort of highlights you'd like to sort of point to for the new members of the committee?
No, I would like to recognize all the administrators and principals, department heads that have really cooperated phenomenally well. We started this in January, we knew we were gonna have trouble, and they've been fantastic. Only ordering things that are absolutely needed to get through the school year, and less of a "I'd like to have, but more of a "I need to have." So everybody's pitched in here and really got us to this point.
And the bottom-line number is a positive number. It's not a very large number, but it's a positive number.
Trending down. On the back page of that document, I've actually added manually some things that I know that are coming that we cannot deduct off, but we have to, we will have to pay.
And what's the, what's the total of those things?
Well, the total of my report shows me about $360,000 to the good, but I also have about $210,000, $220,000 items that we will be paying out, they're just not encumbered, because they're just not processed yet. Things like the stipends for drama law, and things like that. And we have vacation buyouts of people that are leaving the district. We have the course reimbursements typically get done in the next month or two.
These are the items that are bracketed on the last day.
Correct.
Yep. Someone?
Out of that $146,000 you see there, we still pay substitute teachers as they come. So, we're trending right towards breakeven.
Okay.
And Tom thanked all of the administrators and department heads and people who were managing things, but I want to thank him, because he is the one who's captaining that financial ship and making sure that we stay in line. He's working very hard to that effect. I'd like to thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Excellent. All right, does anyone have any questions about the budget to actual? Or comments? Or discussion?
I don't know. I answered my own question. Come on, Tom. He helped answer.
For you. Anything else? Okay. Keep this posted on the 146. All right. Next is review of positions previously cut from the FY '24 budget, Locur special education teacher and elementary English learner teacher.
Thank you. So this is something that I'm bringing to the committee. This is something that I am planning to do. I don't believe this is something that the committee needs to vote on, but I certainly want to make sure you are, that you know what I'm planning to do, that if you have any questions or concerns, you're able to express that to me now. So, the finance committee back in February, this is after we cut roughly $600,000 from the originally proposed budget, the finance committee asked the school committee to cut an additional $600,000 from the budget. When that happened, I recommended, and the school committee approved, that we try not to cut existing people within that $600,000. And we're able to do a couple of different things. We, well, we cut $300,000 from out-of-district transportation with the hope that that money would be reimbursed at the state. We cut an additional $150,000 from out-of-district transportation, but last Monday, right, last week, at town meeting, the town voted to create a special ed stabilization fund and move $150,000 into that fund. So that $150,000 is there to potentially offset that. And then the final $150,000 that we cut were two new positions. One is a bilingual special education teaching position at Locur, and one is an English learner position at the elementary level. The reason I recommended, and I think the school committee approved cutting those two positions, was because there weren't people already in those positions. These were not nice-to-have positions, these were pretty close to gotta-have positions. At Locur, with the Spanish immersion program, students who are identified with disabilities there, who require specialized instruction, particularly in the earlier grades, when all of their instruction is happening in Spanish, they need that support to be happening in Spanish as well. And so, we need to expand, we are able to provide some of that support right now, but as that program continues to increase, next year, there'll be a full program. We really need to hire for a bilingual special education teacher at Locur. We have also seen our English learner numbers continue to grow over the years, and there's sort of two trends. One is, we have more students moving into Wayland for whom English is not their first language, so they need English language support. And we're seeing an increasing number of students who come as Level 1 or Level 2 EL learners. So there's a range of Level 1 to Level 6. Level 1 and Level 2 are students who have not much English at all, so they require more intensive services, more time with an EL teacher. And where we really see these numbers is at the elementary level. One of the wonderful things that our EL teachers do, and our teachers do across the board, is support our EL learners, so that they're able to then exit the program at a certain point. We're actually in the process right now where students, we have a fair number of students who are exiting, because they've demonstrated a high enough level of proficiency through, it's called access testing, to be able to do so. And so, by the time kids get to the middle and high school, we have many fewer EL students. We do continue to have EL students move into middle or high school who have pretty significant needs, who are at Level 1 or Level 2. But we're able to, because of the work of our teachers, exit a lot of students out of the EL program at the elementary level. But EL, elementary is where we really experience the most in terms of EL needs. Both special education and English language learners, those are mandated services that we provide, they are not optional services. And so, we have had a plan in place to make sure that we're providing mandated services to all students next year if we don't have these two positions, but it means it's gonna stretch our EL teachers and our special education teachers. And so, when we had the cuts, I said that Tom and I were gonna continue to look at the budget and see how things played out. And so, I am happy to come back to you and say that I believe that we have found the space in the budget without changing the budget for next year, to be able to bring those two positions back. And I would like to walk you through our plan for how we think we can do this. So I want to start with talking about the special ed, the bilingual special education position at Locur. So, we have an early childhood inclusion coordinator position that is in the budget this year, that we have not filled, that is also in the budget for next year. So this is a position that works very closely with the children's way, but also works with area preschools and works with families in the area to help identify students with special needs before they get to kindergarten age. We did not fill that position this year, in part because Abigail Dressler, who's the new TCW director, who has a pretty significant background in special education, wanted the opportunity to really be heavily involved in both the community and in students coming to TCW. However, that is not a long-term manageable thing for her to do. So that is a position that's in the budget for next year, is a 1.0 position. In conversations with both BJ Cataldo and with Abigail Dressler, they are both very confident that we could fill that with a part-time person as opposed to a full-time person. So we have actually posted for a .5 early childhood coordinator position. But we have in the budget a full FTE, so .5 of that position is available in the budget, without changing the budget. So I'm gonna take that .5 position. And then in working with BJ and Brian Jones at Locur, they are both, they both feel comfortable that if we can add that additional special education teacher position, that we could reduce the number of teacher assistants we have at Locur by one position. So we're not gonna end up increasing the total number of positions, but with the .5 FTE from elsewhere in the budget, and with reducing the Locur sped TA, eliminating one sped TA position and turning that into a teacher position, we are able to fund a full-time teacher, bilingual teacher at Locur. And in speaking to Brian, I checked in with him earlier this week, that should not impact, eliminating that Locur sped TA position is eliminating a position, not a person. So we should not have a person whose job is cut. Instead, we're gonna be able to eliminate a position because of movement that's happening within staff at Locur. So that means that within the budget, without changing the budget, we are able to afford to hire a specialized bilingual teacher at Locur.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So, since you are adding a 1.0, what about the benefits?
So, in this case, it wouldn't impact benefits, because we are reducing the TA position, because we're getting rid of a TA position.
So that would have, that position carry benefits?
I don't know.
A 1.0 would, yes.
A 1.0, yes, would carry benefits, in terms of talking about specific people. Some people choose to actually have benefits, some choose not to have benefits. But that would be a position, yes, that would be benefits-eligible, that's currently there, that's being eliminated, and so we're now instead replacing it with a special education teacher.
Perry?
Would, would this bilingual teacher serve just Spanish immersion or non-Spanish?
Nope. This person, this position would be available to serve both Spanish-speaking and English-speaking students, but we need to hire specifically for a bilingual person.
Yep, okay.
And I'm gonna come back in just a little bit and talk a little bit more about the salary level at which we need to be talking about hiring people. Now I want to talk about the EL position. So, I talked about how we've seen our elementary EL numbers increase. So we have a retirement clay pit this year that was announced after the budget was built. So normally, for the most part, we know about retirements relatively far in advance, and so we're able to incorporate that into the budget. So if somebody's retiring, and we know in October that we're gonna budget that at, we have a standard, I think it's like around, I think it's master step eight? Master step eight is what we budget new positions at, which is around $75,000. So if we know someone's gonna be retiring, then we budget for that vacancy at around $75,000. If we find out someone is retiring after we've built the budget, and they were making more than $75,000, then we're a little bit ahead in terms of the budget. So we have a teacher at Clay Pit, who is at the top of the salary scale, who is retiring. We found out about the retirement after we built the budget, so that creates some payroll budget savings at Clay Pit. In addition, at the high school, we have an open 1.0 EL position. So we need to hire an English language teacher at the high school. That is budgeted at the high end, because there was somebody who had been in that position. We budgeted, that's budgeted at the high end. So by hiring those two positions, the EL position at the high school and the classroom teacher at Clay Pit at our master step eight level, there's enough budget savings there to be able to bring back that EL position. And your question about benefits, in this case, is that adding a what, is that adding an FTE? I think that might be adding an FTE. So I believe that is adding a benefits-eligible position in that situation.
Perry, what about the Clay Pit teacher? Does that need to be backfilled?
Yes, it is. That's backfilled.
So we're backfilling that and using the extra, because they were at the high...
Correct. So we have a classroom teacher who is retiring at the top of the salary scale, but we put in that salary into the budget, because we didn't know they were gonna retire until after we built the budget. So we're hiring that classroom teacher, in fact, I believe, I'm not sure if we already have her, and I'll have to check in with Emily. And, but then there's a, there's a budget saving there because of the difference between where we would hire for a typical vacancy and how much that person was making. And then a similar thing happening in the EL position at the high school.
So has the, has anyone checked with the town or the benefits?
I have not checked with the town. I have not. You didn't check with the benefits yet, so that's something I would need to check with the town about. So, bringing these two, are there other specific questions? I'm gonna talk a little bit about kind of some, the, well, this is very positive, bringing these two positions back is a very positive thing, because it allows us to continue to provide those mandated services, federally mandated services, without stretching our other positions, without increasing caseloads, for example, special educators at the elementary level, without seeing increased caseloads for our EL teachers at the elementary level. There is a financial challenge that this exacerbates. You look like you have a question. Do you have a question right now?
I'm thinking, but I will ask her, and I'll let you finish first.
So, there are two problematic ramifications to doing what I would like to do, what I'm planning to do. One is our budget is extremely tight next year, and this reduces flexibility. So in a close to $50 million budget, things like this happen. Somebody retires after you, after you already built the budget, and so there are some places where there are flexibility. So if things come up, there's some, there's some play in the joints, you know, there's not, it's not extra-budgeted stuff, but there's some flexibility that exists. This means I'm now taking from two places where a little bit of flexibility existed to create these positions, so there's no more flexibility in those places anymore. So that makes, this doesn't, I mean, the budget's already very tight, it's not like it's making it that much tighter, but it makes it a little bit tighter. The other thing that it does is that historically in Wayland, when we have hired for new positions, the principals don't have a ceiling, a budget ceiling that they need to stay below. And there are lots of districts where you do, where principals are told, you cannot hire somebody who costs more than this. In Wayland, it's traditionally been, find the best person you can, you know, be mindful of the budget, but you hire the person who you think is the best candidate for the position, and we're not going to worry too much about how much they cost. If they go above budget, well, there might be some flexibility in the joints in other places. So this means, and I've already had conversations with principals, where there's less flexibility in doing that. Principals are gonna have to be much more mindful of what their personnel budget is for next year, and making sure that they stay within that personnel budget. That doesn't mean that for any specific position, there's a ceiling on what they can hire, but as they look at, if they have three or four positions that are open, they need to look at what their budget is for personnel and make sure that they are staying within that as they hire positions. So if they hire someone who's higher than we had budgeted, then they're probably gonna need to hire somebody who's lower than we had budgeted. That's a bit of a culture shift in Wayland. I don't like making that culture shift. And I think these two positions are incredibly important positions to bring back. So, that is what I am planning to do. Again, I don't believe the, there's not a budget change, so there's, there's not something I think the school committee needs to vote. Nevertheless, I am bringing back positions that were not in the voted budget from the school committee back in February.
Since it's so, it impacts next year's budget in ways that you've just described. Have you had this conversation with David?
I have.
What would you tell us when David has to say?
I mean, David is very deferential to me proposing the things that, or doing the things that he thinks I need to do to make sure the district's in a good place for next year.
And another question I have, so go ahead, proceed.
Thank you for thinking creatively about this. I know there are a lot of students that really need these services, and so, you mentioned we'll have less flexibility, but I think that the flexibility existed to make room for exactly things like this. So I really appreciate you rolling up your sleeves, digging into this, and looking at a lot of places to kind of piece together these positions. I think it's really important. I think it's really important for the students, so thank you.
Thank you.
Just to you, Christina. Yeah, okay. Erin?
And I too applaud the creativity I like that you took at TA positions and 1.5 positions and were able to meld them into full-time teachers. I think that's excellent. It will give us a lot of stability and a lot of skill set for these things, much needed. I am a huge advocate for all special education, just as Christina mentioned, and I think at the early ages, as you're proposing, it's very impactful. The only thing I am concerned with was I heard it may impact the budget next year, and I know there's some other programs that are looking to be funded. I mean, probably have an idea of where I'm going with this. The LBC classroom in particular, I've had quite a few people reach out, curious if that's being carried forward, and I don't know if we should talk about this now or at another time, but I'm understanding that that may not be carried forward.
Oh, no, we, the language-based classroom exists next year.
For the second grade through fifth grade?
So I believe the plan is for it to be third, fourth, and fifth grade for next year.
Okay. So I guess, how are we catching first and second graders or second graders?
I want to be cautious about giving you a twofold answer because while I certainly know a fair amount about special education, that is not where, I've never been a special educator. So that might be a conversation to bring BJ Cataldo into. I know that she and Emily Chertan have been working very closely to talk about a variety of different supports we could provide to students either who are at Clay Pit and not in the LBC or at Happy Hollow or at Locur.
Okay.
So I, I know that they're, they want to make sure that second graders next year who have specific needs, that we're meeting those needs, and I think that might be worth a longer conversation if that's okay.
I completely agree with that. That's great, Perry, and I love how you said by the time they get to high school, we can, you know, remove them from the need, they will no longer need these services and needs, and I think that's the goal of all of these programs, right?
Yes, it is.
Is to help reduce out-of-district cost and to help.
Get kids to the point where they're able to be successful without supports. And some kids will always need supports and we'll continue to always provide them, and we want to increasingly make sure that kids are able to be successful with decreasing supports in place.
Absolutely.
So Erin?
This is actually a good time to say two things. One, I believe the very question you asked, I asked during the budget process, I remember asking a question about the second graders. Because I remember speaking about how, particularly in language-based learning, the earlier you catch the kids, the bigger the impact, the more likely you have success. So I'm going to now say each week, or each time we have a meeting, which is not always each week, people are welcome to send to the chair, or it might be, things that they want to put on the agenda. So if you want to raise this issue again, you can write to the chair an email and have it put on the agenda and have a more thorough discussion. I'm a little reluctant to dive into it right now because it's not separately on this agenda.
I appreciate the learning moment. Thank you all for your grace.
I'm happy, as a general rule, I like to do less talking and have people like Tom or BJ or principals come and speak about things that they're, that are happening, and more often than not, they are the experts and not me, so would love to figure out an opportunity maybe to have BJ come and maybe, maybe BJ and Emily come and speak to that as well. I know we don't have that many meetings left between now and the end of the school year, but happy to try to arrange that.
Sounds good.
So do you need anything more, or is this an informational topic?
I don't, it was in, I think, I'm not looking for a vote, I think I was looking for feedback, and, and if you all said, Perry, that's crazy talk, how could you possibly think about doing that, then I think I would pause and maybe rethink my approach. What I'm hearing from the committee, I think, is great that we can bring these two positions back, concerned that this means the budget's going to be even tighter. I think that it's worth it on balance, and I'm not hearing you disagree with that in a, in a really overt way, and I'm hearing some, are there other places where there's going to need to be some flexibility looking at next year as well? So I would like to move forward and post these positions right away because they're relatively specialized positions and we want to get going on a surge. I'm not, so I'm not hearing, Perry, you're a crazy man, don't do this, so I appreciate that.
I would follow up with the town on the benefits, but we'll be hearing about it anyway.
I actually met with Michael McColl today, I should talk to him.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on that topic? Okay. All right, moving on to administrative matters. School choice discussion, Perry, you promised this was.
I did, so I need to, this, Diane, here we go, school choice discussion. So this is according to the Education Reform Act of 1993, which mandates participation in school choi, choice unless a school district pops out. So effective September 1994, every city, town, or regional school district is required to enroll non-resident students under the choice program unless the school committee votes prior to June 1st not to participate. The section of the law states in part, quote, "This obligation to enroll non-resident students shall not apply to a district for a school year in which a school committee prior to June 1st, after a public hearing, adopts a resolution withdrawing from said obligation for the school year beginning the following September. Any such resolution with said reasons shall be filled with the Department of, filed with the Department of Education, provided, however, that said department shall have no power to review any such decision by a school committee."
So I'm a little hesitant over that characterization, public hearing. Did we post this as a public hearing, Diane? Because we could still do it on the 24th if we need to.
It has to be posted seven days prior to the hearing, so we have time. I will do it tomorrow. I've got it all ready to go.
Great. So we're going to post it for a public hearing, we're going to conduct that hearing on the 24th, and after that, we will vote on school choice. Does anyone want to ask questions about what school choice is, so they know? Okay. All right, good. Okay, so we'll set that up for the next week. All right. Approval of the release with redactions for the following executive session minutes. May 26, 2021, June 9, 2021, June 23, 2021, June, July 28, 2021, August 26, 2021, September 10, 22, 2021, October 20, 2021, November 17, 2021, December 1, 2021, December 15, 2021, December 22, 2021, January 5, 2022, March 31, 2022, April 6, 2022, and November 9, 2022. These are the minutes that we reviewed in executive session, and we just need to approve the release of them in public. I think we just need to notify. Um, pardon, actually. So Diane kindly wrote me up something, hold on for a second. Diane, so when the executive session, when it's approved, you need to. So we need to announce in open session at the next meeting, which is this meeting, that the declassification took place in executive session at our last meeting, which I believe was on the April 26th. Yes, it's May 10.
Yeah, but didn't we do this at the May, I don't think it was, before the meeting?
Before town meeting? The May 1st meeting? Oh, did we do this? Yes, okay. I'm sorry, I apologize. At the May 1st executive session meeting. And then we have to approve the declassified minutes, some with redactions as the law allows. The following executive session minutes were approved to be released with some redactions at the May 1st school committee meeting. My apologies, I'm going to read them again. May 26, 2021, June 9, 2021, June 23, 2021, July 28, 2021, August 26, 2021, September 22, 2021, October 20, 2021, November 17, 2021, December 1, 2021, December 15, 2021, December 22, 2021, January 5, 2022, March 31, 2022, April 6, 2022, and November 9, 2022. So that's our announcement that we have released these with redactions, and I do not believe we need a vote. Okay? So that is that, item 5.2. Okay, this is my item. Discussion and possible vote to appoint an interim chair of the school committee. So because I'm the vice chair, that is the reason I am acting as the chair tonight, I do not have time or inclination to be the chair even for the next month. Usually, we change the roles on the school committee at the end of the fiscal year, which is the end of June, usually it's the last meeting of June. So I have asked Erin if she would be willing to be an interim chair if the school committee wants to appoint her from now until the end of June. Reason we would wait until the end of June to do the permanent thing is so that the two of you have an opportunity to get a sense of what it's like to be on school committee before you have to make that, that decision and think about, you might want to be chair. So I am asking the committee if they will appoint Erin to be an interim chair of the school committee, starting at our next meeting, which I think is the 24th, until the last meeting in June, which I honestly don't know which date it is. So that's my request. I'm going to, does anyone want to have any discussion about that?
Do you want to do it, Erin?
Sure.
I asked her.
I will do it.
Okay, so I'm going to move that the committee appoint Erin as the interim chair of the school committee, beginning at our next meeting and lasting through the end of the fiscal year.
If I'm beside you, I'll second.
Everybody in favor? No opposed? Okay, good, done.
Congratulations, Erin.
Okay, consent agenda, does anyone have anything to say about any of the things on the consent agenda, including the minutes for April 12 and April 14 and May 1?
Father, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second your motion to approve the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Sorry. All right. So wait, I made a motion, second, everybody in favor, did you just do the, just, okay, fine. Okay, so the consent agenda is approved. Matters not recently anticipated by the chair, for the new members, these are matters that typically matters that have come up since the posting of the agenda, that you do have an opportunity to talk to the chair about before, the posting is 48 hours before the meeting, so it's, so the meeting's usually Wednesday, the posting is after non-Monday. And if there's something that comes up of an emergency ner, sorry, nature that you want to talk about after that, within that 48 hours, that's what matters not anticipated are, the chair cannot bring up matters not anticipated because the chair would have anticipated them being the chair, right? So only other committee members can raise matters not anticipated.
I think they're emergency items.
And these are things that you didn't know about 48 hours, right? Okay, so does anyone have any matters not anticipated? Okay. Done with that. Okay. Me at first. Okay, motion for executive session. So I move to enter into executive session with the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Wayland Teachers Association, Wayland Educational Secretaries Association, custodians in food service as permitted by Mass General Laws, Section 21A3, as discussion, open session, I'm sorry, as a discussion, open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the school committee. B, approving executive session minutes as permitted by Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 22, for the following executive sessions, April 12, 2023, and May 1, 2023. C, reviewing executive session minutes as permitted by Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A7, and 22G, for the following sessions, January 4, 2023, January 9, 2023, January 11, 2023, January 18, 2023, Numbers 1 and 2, January 25, 2023, Numbers 1 and 2, February 8, 2023, March 15, 2023, March 28, 2023, March 29, 2023. And D, discussion, discussing strategy G with respect to litigation, parentheses, EZ versus Wayland Club of Schools, et al., MCAD complaint, closed parenthesis, as permitted by Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, as discussion, open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the school committee. The school committee will be joined by Pera Graham, Acting Superintendent, and Diane Mirabala, Recording Secretary. The school committee will adjourn in executive session and reconvene, no, will adjourn in exec, and will not reconvene in open session to discuss, discuss anything. That's my motion.
I second.
Okay, it has to be roll call. Christina, approved. Jess?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.